February 13, 2019, regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission. Role call, Ed.
Mr. Mills will not be here tonight. Mr. Magrino will not be here tonight. Mr. Seleus will not be here tonight. Mr. Cartfils?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyler?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the January 9, 2019, regular meeting?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reapprove those minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports and correspondence, Ed?
None to point out, other than the fact that I think the annual report is in your docket, and I want to thank Kristen and Seth. They worked hard on that. We have it on our website. There's a lot of information in there that folks may be interested in.
Yeah, thank you. Very well put together. Site plans? Subdivision is filed for review? Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing the old business, we've won the new business. And the final plan for the Sherwood Hills resubdivision, Robin Hood Lane?
Kristen, can you hand over this one?
Steven and Kathleen Sawyer and the state of Nyholt are the owners of adjoining residential properties on Robin Hood Lane. They're requesting township approval to resubdivide their lots. The plan is a resubdivision of Lot 29, which is the Holt parcel, 29A, which is the Sawyer parcel, and Holt-Sawyer plant. These parcels were originally part of the Sherwood Hills subdivision. Final plan straightens the property line between the two properties. The realignment carves off .03 acres, which is approximately 1,300 square feet of the whole property, and combines it with the Sawyer property. The Sawyer lot is currently .92 acres and will become .95 acres. The whole property is currently .9 acres and will become .87 acres. Both lots are zoned low-density residential, which requires a minimum lot area of half an acre. They are surrounded by single-family dwellings on all sides. Sublocation would simply adjust the shared lot line, maintaining two conforming lots. Planning staff recommends that the Holt-Sawyer subdivision plan, revisions of Lots 29 and 29A, be approved.
Just real briefly, is the line shifting? This is the current line? They're straightening it out and just moving it? This is the old line? So just to straighten the line out? Is that nothing else? Just straighten the line out?
Yeah, that's all.
Any major comments? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the adjustment of the property line for the Sherwood property as outlined in the drawing.
And I'll second their recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item, the amended plan of the Handle of Springdale Phase 5, Nightbridge Drive.
Benjamin Marcus Holmes, LLC, owners of 109 Nightbridge Drive, is supposed to be here. The Hamlet Street Riley, owner of lots, Lot 107, Nightbridge Drive, located here, are requesting township approval to adjust the shared lot line between the two lots. This is Lot 506, and it currently is, and Lot 507 here. Benjamin Marcus Holmes allowed the Riley House to build a driveway across the shared lot line in anticipation of this subdivision. They had ample lot acreage here to accommodate for that driveway extension over the lot line, so now they're just coming back in to amend the shared lot line. The lots are zoned low-density residential. Requirements are half of an acre. Under the proposal, Lot 506R would be .65 acres, Lot 507R would be .68 acres. They are just simply amending lot line between the two lots, maintaining two conforming lots. Planning staff is recommending approval of the Handle of Springdale Phase 5 amended, revisions of Lot 506 and Lot 507 asked present.
Is there the structure on 506?
Correct. Correct. Just on 507.
Looks like there's plenty of side door.
Ample space.
Yeah, I don't know if any...
Any comments? Comments here? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. That the planning commission recommend the Plan 5 amended, revisions of Lot 506 and Lot 507.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I see final plan, LaSanti Plan Number 1, Turkeyfoot Road.
Joseph and Deborah LaSanti, owners of 12.3 acres along Turkeyfoot Road. This is the intersection here of Churchill and Turkeyfoot. This is Turkeyfoot on your way to ADA Contrax Farms, that way. They own 12.3 acres here. The request before you is approval of the LaSanti subdivision, final plan number one. This is a recommendation to council. The proposed subdivision does two things. One, it reconfigures the property line between the LaSanti House lot and his acreage that he owns just north. So it's resubdividing that, giving the LaSanti House lot, Lot 1, an additional .68 acres for a total of 6.5 acres. The second part of this subdivision is they want to split the parcel they own just to the, would be to the south of their existing house parcel. They want to split this into two big lots. These lots are 3.12 acres. That's Lot 2, and Lot 3 is 2.69 acres. There's an existing driveway that currently connects to Turkeyfoot Road. It was used by the FAA to get up to a beacon for the Pittsburgh Airport up there. They no longer use that. They use this street to get to it now. But they're preserving that driveway, and the two lots, Lots 2 and 3, will share that driveway. There's more than adequate site distance from this driveway. There is 290-plus feet looking left. This is looking left from the driveway. And looking right from the driveway, there's 300-plus feet of site distance. Both of those distances exceed our minimums in our subdivision ordinance. This area of Peters is located in the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority watershed. We're under corrective action plan. Therefore, the new lot that they're creating has to be approved by the DEP sewage facility planning modules. They're working on getting that paperwork completed with us. Before we go to council, we'll have that paperwork completed. There is a public sewer that runs right through the middle of the property, so both of the new lots that are being created will have access to all utilities, including public sanitary sewer. So planning staff's recommending that the plan be approved, subject to Peters Creek Sanitary Authority approval and DEP approval of the planning modules prior to the township releasing the final plan for recording. So it's a reconfiguration of the lot line and creating one additional lot with a shared driveway to Turkeyfoot.
So is there any issue with the driveway being so close to the property line?
On the plan, there is a shared driveway easement that will be recorded. I think if you zoom in a little bit more, you'll see it.
Yeah, I see it.
There's a 24-foot wide shared driveway easement. I should have pointed that out.
And that's a private ride, right?
It'd be, yeah, it's a private driveway.
I have a question. I have a question about the original driveway for the, to the FAA beacon. Was that a granted right of way? Is it something that the proprietors had to deal with? Is there some sort of understanding with the FAA that that's no longer going to be in access?
Well, the FAA is not abandoning. They still...
I know, I know there's a road back there.
It's an existing right of way that the FAA secured from up and owner of the property prior to LaSanti owning it, and this is not impacting that in any way.
It's still in effect.
Still in effect.
It's still in effect.
They don't use it. They go in now off of this road and then just travel from there up to the facility.
Are there traffic impact fees involved?
There are. Both Lots 2 and 3 will be subject to a $1,500 traffic impact fee. That's a noted condition on the final plan. And each lot, when they come in for a building permit, have to submit stormwater management plans to us, and those get reviewed and approved by our township. Those are noted conditions on the final plan.
Any audience comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the LaSanti subdivision plan number one for the memo dated February 7, 2019, and in accordance with the two conditions.
Second motion. All in favor? Next item is the site plan, St. Peter's Garden Center, Lot 1, 214 Valley Brook Road.
This is a site plan proof, so this doesn't go to council. So the owners of the property, Ed and Susan Courtney, owners, they own 1.02 acres, property zone, general commercial, located at 214 Valley Brook Road. They're requesting township planning commission approval for a new site plan for the proposed use is a animal-dog daycare center with grooming and kenneling services. These are all permitted uses in the general commercial zoning district. I'm just going to briefly run through some highlights of the plan here. Site access. Currently, access to the St. Petersburg Center occurs across a one-lane bridge. Part of the improvements with this plan is the owners have secured a permit from DEP to widen that bridge out to 24 feet wide to accommodate two-lane traffic. There is a condition in planning staff recommendation that widening of that bridge be completed before any occupancy permit would be issued for any business to start operation in this building. The proposed building is 6,720 square feet. The proposed use, animal daycare, requires 10 parking spaces in this case. They're showing on their plan 17 spaces, so they're meeting our parking requirement. I want to point out that Peters Township Council, back in December of 2018, granted a five-foot modification to the 15-foot buffer that's required between the commercial property and the Arrowhead Trail property. They granted them five feet, so the buffer on their side, on the Courtney side of the property, is 10 feet, and the additional five feet will be planted on the township property. This was a key modification, in my mind, because it did allow for the site to be designed with 360 circulation around the building. Stormwater management. We have a stormwater management report. Stormwater will be controlled with two underground 36-inch pipes. There's one pipe here that runs this length, and then there's a section of pipe down here. All the inlets in the parking lot direct the water to these two pipes, and it's a controlled discharge of 8-inch out of the 36-inch pipe, so it's an underground stormwater management facility gateway. And I'll get to that. Gateway has reviewed that, and they have a few comments on that, that the site engineer will have to address before we would authorize any site work or building permit approval. Site lighting and landscaping. They're showing three lights around. Can you zoom out just a tad? Three lights, freestanding lights around the parking lot, and they're lighting the rest of the parking lot with a building amount of lights. All those lights are shielded. I have the details. And their lighting plan shows that the light's going to be kept on the site and not out on Arrowhead Trail or Valley Brook Road. This site is subject to a traffic impact fee, and that'll have to be taken care of and paid for prior to issues of the building permit. Building elevations, I'll just show you those real quickly. Currently, the building is a two-story building. The proposed building design takes that two-story building down to a one-story building. They're going to put a hip-style asphalt shingle roof. The, can you go to the other one? Those are the east and west-facing elevations, the front and the back of the building, and this is, the top one faces Arrowhead Trail, and this faces Valley Brook Road. It'll be the white split-face block that you see down there now.
Are those windows there?
Those are windows along the Valley Brook elevation. So with that, staff's recommending that the planning commission approve the site plan. I want to point out that in my recommendation, I point out that one of the criteria in our zoning ordinance in Section 440-1003a2b requires that the owner's application and plans available include documentation that they have the financial capability to carry out this project. We have not received that yet, so condition number one, in my staff recommendation, is that the owners provide that documentation to us by, two, the satisfaction of our township solicitor by 4:00 p.m. on February 2019. I can go through the rest of the conditions if you want me to. I do, I did modify my proposed condition number 11, which read, "Any additional comments Gateway Engineers may have." I've since, I've received a review letter from them. There's no earth-shattering comments in there. It's just tightening up the site a little bit. So with that, I want to change condition number 11 to read, "All comments except for general comment number four in Gateway Engineers' February 12, 2019, review. Be addressed and revised plans be resubmitted to Peters Township prior to issuance of the building permit and prior to the township authorizing site work to begin." So that's revision to my proposed condition number 11. So I just wanted to hit some highlights.
So I saw dump trucks or garbage trucks in the lands and stuff like that. What's the capacity of that bridge? Is that, it's capable and all that? Can't hear any? Two trash trucks crossing at the same time?
Yes. If it's wide, it's 24 feet.
So it'll have that capacity. And where's the mechanicals? I saw a note about screen mechanicals, but I don't see them.
I'm not really sure. That's why I made it a condition that wherever it is...
Okay.
Be screened.
So that's why you got it. Okay. So the lights on the building are shown on the site plan and not on the rendering?
Yeah, I have a detail in the package of information. There's shielded lights that focus the light down, both the freestanding light poles, as well as the light fixtures proposed for the, for beamout to the building.
The plantings, I guess, in the buffer zone, is there something in our ordinances that it had to be there? Or if it did, why only the building? It's just covering the building. Is that something in our ordinance that has to be?
The rest, the area down here is a natural buffer and that exists there. That vegetation that exists there will not be disturbed.
So the buffer that was put in place on the plan, that was as per regulations? Well, it certainly would be an improvement than what's there now, so I think that this is an uptick from what we've been seeing for a few decades. What's the business of the trail from the back end?
I don't have an exact distance, but to the actual paved part of the trail?
Yeah, 40 feet or so.
Probably in that territory. I don't know the exact footage, but it's 20, 30 feet plus.
Is that the hash marks? That's the 100-year flood plan? Is that what that shows?
It is. And one of the conditions, condition number three, is that they need a permit from the DEP to do this work in the flood plan. It's my understanding they've applied for that at this time. Still pending permit.
Has there been any concern across the street with anybody that lives across the street yet?
We have not heard anything.
And there is public sewage, right? It's all going to be re-asphalt, did I take it? Whoever's doing it? The Avenue Asphalt?
I think the applicant should come up and answer these questions.
Yes, it'll all be freshly paved.
If you could come up, please, and state your name.
April, for the personal TV.
320 Springdale Route. It'll all be freshly paved.
And the wall that faces the trail looks pretty sterile. I mean, it looks just like a blank wall with a small door in it. Any plans to freshen that up? Maybe do something? Yeah, can you bring up the weather here and just the...
It looks like, it shows lights, there's going to be lights, lighting also.
Any plans for to squeeze that side up or just leave it the way it is? Just answer honestly, I just was curious. Looks pretty sterile and pretty blank the way it is now, but...
Along the trail side, I don't, with the elevation change, no, I don't think you're even going to see that, but you might just see the top of the roof.
Oh, even from the trail or the parking lot, or, you know, just kind of thinking of the whole, the whole...
It'll be well-screened. The landscape plan should be well-screened.
So what you're saying is the way it is will just be pretty much just plain block up to the asphalt, up to the asphalt roof then?
Yeah, well, split-face.
Okay.
She does more than engineer, and I just...
Susan Courtney?
Hi.
Hi. The landscaping kind of slopes down, so when you're on the trail, you're really not going to see much of the building other than the roof. So we just left it as the white block at this time. It's just a drag behind the building.
Do you guys have any plans or any thoughts, like we mentioned about earlier, about what the mechanicals are going to be, or any plan to plan?
Frankly, we haven't thought that stage. We just decided to lower the building to the one story. I think we can, I think we can fit that inside interior in the roof.
It's a pretty tight spot, that's just why I have...
I haven't checked the HVAC, but we don't even have the building plans finished yet. But if they are outside, they'll be screened. I mean, we do want to be screened too. We certainly wouldn't want anybody else looking out like the trail people or the customers viewing it.
Where will the customers enter with their pets? On the right side of that?
The east or westerly side.
East or west, either side, okay. And along the drive going around, is there any type of a guide rail going down?
Well, the township suggested a guide rail. We have a real problem with that, because I've lived that creek for 20-some years, and I lived through the damage caused by ivan. Any obstruction, i.e. guardrail, but right now, we have a curb proposed. And I'm suggesting we stick to the curb with maybe a 15-mile-hour speed limit sign. It's a dead straightaway. Any impediments, i.e. guardrail posts, simply catch all the logs, and that causes the flooding. The reason we don't flood on the other building is because we have straightaway walls and catch no trees. I mean, I've had trees caught under my bridge, stumps and all, they're eight feet tall, and there you go. That causes the problem with the flooding. As long as that creek flows, there is no problem.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of a guardrail for, you know, you're talking about something that happened 15 years ago, and hopefully won't happen for another 84, but, you know, the guardrail is more for the protection of your customers coming around. If they happen to look over their shoulder, or a dog got loose or something, it's more protection, not about flooding.
I think the curb we call for is like a 12-inch raised concrete curb. It would be almost impossible, you'd actually have to, I really think, try to jump that curb. So again, a 15-mile-hour speed limit sign, and anybody in their right mind, how fast are you going to come along a straight stretch? There's no guardrail, just for plain, there's no guardrail along the trail of Calipit's. There's other places in the township that have no guardrail, far more to use than this drop-off to the trail.
Yeah, but this, I'm going to suggest we stick with the guardrail. That's just my opinion. I think it's a good idea, especially in front of the cars, right, where the highlighter are.
I would say our condition, this one is condition 5A. Condition 5A is guide rail from this point down and around to the bridge.
Well, that started as a suggestion, then it became a change to a recommendation.
We think it's...
Yeah, DEP might not permit. I have to apply for DEP permit, so they may have problems disrupting the water.
Yeah, but then you have bad weather. I would ask Gateway weigh in on that.
Our recommendation, simply because of safety, would be to have guide rail in that area. Again, you're kind of in a tight spot there, like you said, somebody doesn't pay attention, and it's a short way to get there. That's a narrow lane, you're only at about 12 feet there, and it would be pretty quick to get over there. The plan doesn't call out the curb as far as concrete, so we assumed it would be an asphalt wedge curb. If it's concrete, you should call it out that way.
Well, you change it to concrete, would you reconsider?
It would certainly be more of a deterrent to crest that.
Correct, I thought it was called by the concrete. I might be mistaken.
I didn't see it, so it...
I still have a concern, DEP, I know I need a permit for that. They might not approve, I don't know. Even if they do approve it, I'm still concerned about the logic flooding in the building.
Understood.
So, I mean, like I said, I've lived there, I've lived that street for 20 years, I know what comes down, and it's getting worse every year.
Sure.
I'm not trying to be obstructionist, but I'm just trying to be realistic, it's a problem.
So I would say maybe you want to consider a higher curb then? Something smooth?
Well, you could make it maybe 18 inches or something.
Well, yeah, I mean...
Literally, it would be almost impossible, you'd have to physically be trying to kill yourself.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, if your concern is something that is smooth rather than something that is open.
That's what I would like to know.
Well, what size curb?
Minimum standard is 6-inch. I mean, 12 would be recommended here simply as a safety precaution. And obviously, you'll have to show details on the plan and how that's all going to get graded in with the asphalt.
I'd be more comfortable with 12 inch.
That's fine.
Well, it's whatever the... It's ultimately up to you. I think we should leave it worded. It's either guide rail and/or 12-inch. You okay?
I'd be okay with 12-inch curb.
12-inch?
As long as Gateway is okay with that, I think, I like how that reads, and/or...
12-inch concrete curb along the same stretch that is pointed out in 5A. Yeah, the details will be shown on the plan.
Where exactly, you can use your plan, where exactly are the three parking lot poles to be?
Do we have the lighting?
Yeah, I just actually was looking for that same thing. There's one on the far-left corner, I believe. One, two.
Right here?
Yeah, it's parking, page two, right there.
Right there? Okay.
One in the back, right.
Right here? Okay. And the third one is right here, just don't, I'll make sure there wasn't one light down in five A right in the middle, but everybody's, smashes them down, so it's good. Okay, and then there's lighting around the, on the building itself, correct?
It's showing, so it's three on each side, I believe. Two on the, two on the entrance sides.
Yep. Those two on the entrance sides are enough? What's the operating hours expected, we know?
I don't have it figured, normally they operate roughly six to six.
Hey, can you step up and talk into the microphone?
Oh, sir, normally, yeah, normal operating hours are usually six to six, the last dog place is roughly that, uh, hours, maybe six to seven in the evening.
The, uh, you would, you obviously would know, what was the square footage of the last dog place that was in the, your, the other building?
Roughly fifty-two hundred, roughly.
So the, so the, what was the name of that?
Bushbit.
Bushbit had fifty-two hundred in the other building, and this one's sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven fifty, I believe, or sixty-seven thirty, I can't recall.
And just pointing out, you don't have any outdoor runs, everything's integral?
Everything will be integral at this point. If, obviously if the tenant would request that, we'd have to come back to the council.
Do you have a tenant lined up?
At this point, we actually have, speaking with two of them, so...
And, uh, if, if all your conditions are met, what's your anticipated start time for renovation?
A S A P.
Any audience comments?
Paul Lauer, I'm the township manager. Um, the only thing I want to point out is that the application is incomplete, because one of the requirements is that, um, at the time of submittal, that there be evidence of, uh, financial, uh, backing, so that in fact this project, uh, can be completed. And, um, in the case of this project, we all know that this building has sat for many years in its current condition, so, um, that requirement, um, uh, in this particular case is of paramount consideration. So what Mr. Zook has suggested is something that, um, the township, um, is prepared to endorse, is that, once again, we work with the Courtney's beyond that which we would normally do, and give them an opportunity to in fact, uh, present, um, that, um, uh, statement of, of, of financial wherewithal to be able to undertake this project, and to do that after in fact that they have, have, uh, made this submittal. You know, when, um, in July of two thousand seventeen, uh, Mr. Courtney, um, as part of a construction appeals board hearing, had indicated that in his opinion, that this building would cost seven hundred thousand dollars to build, I think that quite frankly, that, that's a, um, that a very conservative estimate of what it would cost, but what he also said in addition to that was that when the time came, and he needed to be able to demonstrate, um, the financial capacity to do that, he could. And all I'm suggesting is that the, that the planning commission ensure that in fact that statement of financial capacity is submitted to, to the township, so that in fact we can make a determination as to which way we would like to proceed with regard to that site. So thank you.
May I ask you, what, what would be the guidelines behind such a financial statement?
It varies, it varies from project to project, um, generally what we do is we defer to the solicitor, um, you could, you could have a letter of credit, you could have loan documents that show that you have, um, acquired funds to be able to undertake that project, you could post your own personal funds to do that, but it varies from project to project.
And who decides, would be the solicitor that makes a recommendation as to how many or if any of those would be suffice?
Well, we, we have suggested to Mr. Courtney's attorney that she be in touch, and, and we've had this discussion with the Courtney's, this is not a new revelation to them, we've been having this discussion as these drawings have been, been progressing, um, and I know, um, that, um, they have had discussions with Mr. Smith, but to this date, those, those have not been produced.
Okay, and they have been under your condition, the twentieth framework, so to produce those and for the solicitor to accept them?
Yeah, to ascertain whether they're appropriate.
And, and since I'm here as solicitor for the township, we're not arguing over necessarily at this time the form of what that looks like, we don't have anything to look at, so what we don't want the ordinance to read is, is very narrow, so we want it to be as broad as possible in terms of the financial ability, in whatever form that might take, and so that's why, um, the township has asked that I just take a look at it. For instance, um, I've been involved in a, in a cash transaction, if you're going to purchase a home for the cash transaction, um, the seller will want proof of funds, you know, proof that you can go through with the project, something comparable to that, they may not have the cash, they may have loan docs, um, other applicants that have come through the township, I think, have given letters of credit or statements from the bank, um, so we know that they may not take one particular form, and in this instance, the township asks that I, and, and I think in other instances, has asked that I look at that form. Their argument is that they don't believe, and Ms. Anks here, their counsel, can speak to that, that they don't have to submit that information. The problem we have in the absence of that information, we don't believe the project will go forward or can go forward, and regardless, this is part of Peter's Township's ordinance, it's not something that we're conditioning in so much as, this is a law on the books that no one in this room has the ability to waive, I mean, we just have to follow that provision. So that's the township's position. And to take you back to, in April of two thousand seventeen, our building inspector found this property as is is dangerous and unsafe, need to be demolished immediately. So the idea that if something could get approved and there is no money to do the project, I think the statement was we would do it ASAP, well, do you have the financial wherewithal to do that? In the absence of that, the dangerous condition cannot be evaded, it'll just continue to sit and sit and sit, and that's why, um, on a parallel tract, we've asked, or attempting to try to demolish the building unless they can move forward with doing the project that they've shown you here tonight.
So a follow-up question is, is if this gets approved and they do submit documentation that they are financially able to pull the project off, what's the time limit? How many years until the approval goes away?
One year.
Well, and if I may, um, I have...
Say your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Pamela Ank, I'm counsel for Ed and Susan Courtney, um, as to this matter. And, um, what I would like to point out is there are two possible provisions under which the township could require, um, the financial information that they are looking for. One is under the subdivision and land development, um, provision, and I, I would argue that this project does not meet that, this is an existing building and it's being renovated. Um, so I would argue that that provision does not apply. If you want to, um, look at the guarantee of lot improvements, um, I would still argue that that's meant to be lots and subdivisions, once again, this is the renovation of an existing building, and frankly, it looks to me like under that particular ordinance, that the requirement of financial ability is not, doesn't come into play until a year after the building permit has been issued. So I think that it's, I think that that would be premature, now if you issue the building permit and the site plan, and then that, and nothing complies with that, and they don't comply with that, then I think you can require a bond, but I think it's premature to do that at this point.
Well, it seems to me that the history of this, uh, location has maybe warranted such financial ability prior to issuing, issuing some building permits, I would...
Well, I would, but I would argue that the eight-year ordinance does not allow for that.
Yeah, I'm just stating my, my opinion, yeah, we, we have a history of some, some issues.
And I would suggest to you that if that is an argument that the, that the Courtney's wish to pursue, this is not the venue for that argument, that's an argument to be taken up in, in court. The ordinance, as far as we're concerned, is clear and applicable to this situation, and again, it's the township's position that this approval should not occur without, um, some provision or condition that that be submitted, and in fact, it should have been submitted before this was ever considered by the planning commission, but in an attempt to accommodate the Courtney's, um, we have, um, at, uh, my suggestion, had this placed on your agenda tonight, so...
Well, I, just so it's also clear, the Courtney's have put forth several times that they would happily start on the demolition of the building immediately if the township would have issued a provisional permit to allow them to do that, and, and the township was not willing to consider that. So, I mean, they're trying, it's, it's kind of a little box, they're, they're kind of boxed in a little bit, um, and I would also argue, I'm not sure what Ms., Mr. Lauer is referring to, but your ordinances are clear on when you can require the statement of financial capability, and it's not before anything's, anything's submitted.
And if Mr. Courtney's prepared to come in tomorrow for a demolition permit for that entire structure, we'd be happy to issue it, because if he doesn't, and this, this project doesn't move forward, the township's prepared to have that building demolished.
Well, in addition, if I might add, the initial letter that the building inspector sent to the Courtney's was requesting that they demolish the building, and if they didn't do so, then the township would take the steps to move forward on its own, lean the building to satisfy those demolition costs. So from day one, the township has demanded, um, under the property maintenance code, that the Courtney's actually demolished the building. That was, um, almost two years ago in April, and it's, this is a parallel tract that they've taken to move forward with trying to build on this, to build a structure on the, on the site, but it doesn't negate the financial ability, which is required in all site plan applications.
Well, and I, I'll just comment once again, we, in, in our meetings and discussions, they have put forth that they would happily, especially in light of the fact that they need to pull down that second floor anyway, um, to accommodate this building and site plan, they, they, they would have done that, but they need a permit to even begin, and it's been made clear at the meetings we've had that, that they're not considering that.
But that's not a demolition permit, that's a building permit that's required to begin that, what, what's being proposed there, and that, they're correct, without this site plan approval, the township will not issue a building permit.
Yeah, is there any other audience comments?
Who decides what the magnitude of the financial capability has to be?
Well, and I think the only thing we have to go, when Mr. Lauer, um, spoke to in the, in the construction appeals board hearing, Mr. Courtney represented seven hundred thousand dollars. Now, we, if, if a number came in and they showed, this is what we think the project will cost, obviously we have, if we need to call upon engineers or someone to look at that, to see if that number's consistent, we can do that, um, to see if, if that meets it. We're not there yet, we're not haggling over the amount, um, I don't know that they've ever put a price tag on this, other than Mr. Lauer testified to, was that seven hundred thousand dollar figure back in two thousand seventeen, so, um, we don't know that they have dollar one to move this project forward, that, that's the problem.
One more comment. So this has been a long and expensive process with this, um, and it is not possible to estimate, let me back up a little bit, as I think all parties, um, will acknowledge, this is a significantly different building, much smaller, probably about a third the size that was, was anticipated, when, um, when these plans and when this process first began. They've redrawn the plans, and the problem, the thing is, that they've redrawn them, had incurred significant expense at having gateway review plans and review plans. The site plan has to be approved at this point before any building plans are going to be finalized, upon which that, um, any kind of statement of financial capability is going to be, uh, is, is going to be based on. Um, but it's going to be significantly less than the building Mr. Courtney talked about two, um, a year and a half ago, because it's a much smaller building. At this point, I guess my question then becomes, wouldn't it be more fair to wait until the site plan was approved, so that they can get the building, I mean, it doesn't even make sense for them if the site plan's not, they're never going to get approved, to make, to go to the expense of yet more building plans?
Mr. Courtney has developed plans for this, this building, and we are in possession of those, it would be easy to estimate the construction cost of that, and I actually believe that if you were to do that, what you would discover is that it would be more than seven hundred thousand dollars, because if you look at the square footage of this structure, and, and simply do, you know, the math, the, at seven hundred thousand dollars, that square foot construction cost would be very low. So I, I think that is something that is certainly possible to be done, even if it was done on, on a, a, um, a basis of a average square foot construction cost for commercial, I, I think you can get close to that number. And that would be something you could do quickly.
Sir, I do almost all my own work.
Okay.
Now, we knew it was seven hundred thousand dollars on a two-story building, and you said we'd never get the plans in, we got the plans in, we have been approved, we've been disapproved numerous times.
No, you said, you told us that in sixty days from the hearing, that in fact we would have drawn, we would have plans in, we are now two years later.
Okay, um, I, I would like to, um, my, my concern is, is there's too much contentious conversation going on here for us, at least myself, to make a motion to approve this plan at this time, and I'm, I'm probably going to ask the solicitor, um, your opinion, I, I don't feel that now's the time to have this in front of our board, um, I think that we need to get this resolved, and my motion is going to be to table this until you can come back with financial question resolved, because we just, I, I, in my heart, can't see to me to approve this site plan, I don't, I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but, um, we just have two, one big question here that, that needs to be answered.
Right, it, there's a...
I don't know if we can do what the, uh, the attorney says, approve the site plan, but yet come back and say that they don't have financial...
Well, that, what was proposed, I believe, by Mr. Zook's office was just that, that it, if the recommendation to approve it with these conditions, one of them is to demonstrate the compliance with the financial capability within seven days, um, giving them an extension of time. What Mr. Lauer indicated was normally we wouldn't even let it get this far to you, because of that shortcoming is a prerequisite for the site plan. You know, if someone comes in and has a project, it remains, um, and, and you'll see no comment yet from the applicants as to, other than we want to start immediately, as, where, where's your money? Is it, is it through a lender? What, what do you have lined up to start immediately? That's the information that we're not requiring or picking on them, that's the information we require of our applicants, and we get them, we get the line of credits, we get the bank statements, we get whatever they provide, we're not, we're just treating them the same way, and, and here, they can speak to you as to what is it, do they, well, we have cash, they can give us a bank statement, so there's available cash on hand, or we have cash and a loan in place, whatever, that's what we have to evaluate, because, again, this is not one of those situations where we're adding a condition particular to the site, that condition really isn't a condition, it's the law, it's the ordinance.
Okay, so we can approve the site plan with that number one, first condition to be solid?
And actually, that's what the township would prefer, because we want to move this process along.
Well, then that case, um, and gentlemen, don't follow my lead, I'm just making a motion here, because I, I sometimes vote against my motion. So, um, I'm going to make a motion that the planning commission approve the site plan based on conditions so stated in planning staff's recommendations, and that the, um, condition regarding the guide rail be changed to show a guide rail or a twelve-inch concrete curb that is approved by gateway engineers. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to add to the conditions of my motion?
I just need to point out, I modified condition number eleven.
I was just going to say, yeah.
And modify...
And modify the condition number eleven, yeah, as, as I've detailed earlier.
So, given that motion, you guys have any more comments or discussion about it?
No, but if we can do it with that, with those conditions, then I would second that motion. motion.
Okay. So... All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Good luck. Good luck.
All right, moving on to the planning portion. Any miscellaneous items?
I don't have any, I'll use. Thank you.
No other business?